I need to be heard. Yet, yet.
Okay, we're all set?
Okay. I'm here.
I could take my shoe off like Nikita Koochik, you know, that'll do it right for those of you that remember. Let me call to order the special board meeting for today, Thursday, August 13th. You'll rise for a pledge of allegiance. Gene, if you want to lead us in that, please.
You bet. Please begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Chairman Mulholland?
Here.
Director Craven?
Here.
Director Bennett?
Here.
Director West?
Here.
Director Borchardt?
Here.
Okay. Agenda review?
Nothing to change, Chair.
Okay. All right, then we'll accept that with no changes. Public comments, an opportunity for the public to address the board on issues that are not on the agenda. Anybody have anything? Okay. Board member comments?
The only comment I'll make is I rode my bicycle in Iowa two weeks ago from one end of the Missouri River to the Mississippi River, and I saw corn that was 20 feet high because they are living in water. But when you talk to them, they go, "You boys in California, you have a water problem, don't you?" Anyway, I don't think they're going to load it in trucks and ship it to us, but they could make money, I assume. That water, yeah, well, they'll send the corn, too, yeah.
Anybody else, any other comments? Let's deal with...
Actually, just briefly. The more reading and research I do, the more concerned I've become that our planning, our Sigma planning process really is missing a stakeholder component. I mean, the tag's a good start. It's not technically stakeholders, but it's a good start. I think we need to broaden it. I came across a really good Sigma sustainability planning stakeholder engagement guide that's been published by a group of agencies. I commend this to staff, have them look at it, and then hopefully at the next meeting, come back maybe with something in here or something else so we can broaden that stake... I'd hate to see the plan get undermined by that missing piece.
Okay. All right. That'll be for you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right. Let's go to item number one.
Chairman Mulholland, members of the board, I'm Tully Clifford with the Public Works Agency. I'm here today to speak about a new concept for a meter reading proposal. And of course, it's something that's come before the board previously, but I think this is one that will have really a dual purpose, one that will enable the GMA to collect data and utilize data in its planning processes, but would also enable well operators to use this meter network for their own purposes to enhance their operations. Compared to previous systems, the new concept would be low-power with very high communication reliability. And this is extremely important, of course. And it could be built on an existing county network. The county system currently houses the emergency services, fire, sheriff, emergency services, thereby highlighting its reliability and the opportunity to provide good communication reliability for this system. Staff from the GMA will need to review this link with the county information technology and the software of the county to see where it would head and where it enables this system to go and to determine what that relationship would be and how portable, so to speak, the system could then become. There's a team here that's been organized by Semtech out of Camarillo, and they'll provide additional details on the overall system after I am done. But basically, they have approached staff in the GMA and requested that we participate in a proof of concept to see if a system that they are proposing will indeed work. They would like us to select up to 20 wells and have their new system installed for a test period, work through some of the bugs, work with the operators, see how it works, and then to look where we need to go in the future. We would also then work with that team to look at the operational capital costs associated with the concept, should the proof of concept be successful, and we come back to the board then to recommend further action. This concept, I believe, is fully compatible with the work that we're doing on, associated with the development of groundwater sustainability plan, as it would provide us with reliability of data collection, which in turn should reduce staff time dealing with semi-annual extraction reports, increase the accuracy of reporting, and reduce administrative burdens as well on the operators. A real bonus of the system, I believe, would be the ability for the growers to undertake advanced agricultural analytics at a reasonable cost, to have access to data and information that they could use to improve their operations. Semtech will speak briefly to that as well today. At this stage, of course, there's several things that we don't know, and that includes some of the meter replacement costs, meter compatibility, communication reach, acceptability to the board, how to pay for the new system, maintenance responsibilities, who does what, minor little details. I think it's things that we... You're a tough crowd today. I think those are things that we will need to work out as the proof of concept moves forward, which we would then come back to the board with certainly greater detail as the proof of concept proceeds. One thing that we've been able to determine at this stage is that operating costs will be approximately equal to the current cost of administering the reporting that currently goes on. Inspection and enforcement will still be required. We can't get rid of that. I think it'll be an essential component. Without going into any additional details on the what-ifs, instead I'll ask Corey Kiefer to step forward to provide an overview from the team's perspective on what they would like to see happen as part of the proof of concept.
I think they can project stuff up here if you may want to turn around. Yeah, well, I think I have it here, correct?
Maybe we need to sit out here so we can just turn around.
We can either sit in those chairs, or we can just spin it, spin it around. What do you want to do?
I'm going to go sit because it's farther and I can see better. Thank you. Again, my name is Corey Kiefer. I represent a group that's come together called LoRa Partners. I am from Mueller Systems. We have four companies that have come together and developed this LoRa Partners. Mueller Systems being one. We are in the water industry. We deal with water systems at every level. Semtech, as you know, is in Camarillo. There's the chip company, Sennett, who is the main piece of this as far as the network that'll be deployed and put up. And part of the reason we're here is because we found a solution and a capability to do the major challenges to this previous, as Tully said, when you were looking into it. And any other pieces tell it. There are parts of the sensors and some of the other analytics that we can utilize really for the ag side of the, and for the growers and for the ag side of this presentation. So, and solutions. So really, to start off, a green ag initiative. So we're leading the way to an IoT, which is the Internet of Things. Really, this has become smart city. Internet of Things have become the big driver now because of resources. And also interoperability. And what interoperability is, is multiple systems capable of communicating and exchanging data. Now, typical systems proprietary that, like with ours or Mueller Systems, that would be proprietary, same with some of the others. And as we come together and develop this LoRa partnership, we now have interoperability, which is a very large concern for a lot of utilities, a lot of counties, and a lot of markets across the country, not only California. So really, this is the GMA's value, like I said, is the network, the low-powered, long-range capabilities. And that's why we approached really Ventura and the GMA, because this will test our capabilities. It's easy for us to stand up here and say, "We can do this, we can do that." What we decided to do was put some R&amp;D, put some money, basically where our mouths are, and bring this proposal and say, "Look, we'll prove in the toughest conditions that we have the capabilities of doing this." So LoRa Partners are what we do. We partner with water providers and users, growers, cities, other providers, and other counties. We provide advanced agricultural analytics. And what we've done for the last couple of days, our team has gone out to some growers in the GMA, really to get educated, because we know what we do. We don't have a full understanding of what it is, that the needs are for the growers in the GMA. So we've very much so been educated the last couple of days in the capabilities and the benefits to the growers, and that's really what we want to accomplish. Not only are we doing metering, which has some benefits to both, from a resource standpoint, from also understanding from a grower standpoint of the consumption, but really, it's the analytics. We enable conservation, sustainability plans. As Tully said, you're in the middle of one of those now. Instead of pulling all the resources away from that, we have basically came in and said, "Look, we can be part of it and help you with this process." And then we're leading the way to interoperability and connective devices, being the Internet of Things. So really, what we propose for this proof of concept is a three-phase, really, testing, is what it is. The first phase, obviously, is going to be the metering. That's the easiest for us to do. Put up the network, do the metering. We've got some locations, some volunteers. And again, all of this is at our cost, LoRa Partners' cost. We're using this as R&amp;D. So phase one will be metering solutions and our capabilities. And we're really going to test the network that we say we can do long-range, low-band. That's what we're going to test. So after we prove out with that criteria in the first phase, and we prove and satisfy not only yourselves and the GMA, we'll then move on to phase two. Phase two then gets into some of the advanced ag analytics, sensors. We had heard the last couple of days about water quality, pH balance, some of the weather conditions, other capabilities of even on farm equipment and tank levels and stuff of fuel tanks. So those are really the things that we want to work with in phase two and get feedback and partner with growers and customers in the GMA to really find out how we can utilize this system for your benefit. Then the third piece would be the customer satisfaction. Really, that's a consumer engagement piece, so that remotely, as a business owner, as a consumer, you have the ability, it's your data, you have the ability to have that data, track that data, and then be able to utilize that data to your best benefit. So that's really the proposal for this three-phase proof of concept. So some of the, quickly, I just wanted to highlight this. I kind of touched on it, but really, it's the green and smart agency is really what we're trying to become. The screen, there's smart cities, there's smart counties, there's smart agencies. Really, the smart is the buzzword, and really becomes a lot with this Internet of Things is really the driving force. So some of the things that we can provide for monitoring capabilities in developing these advanced agricultural analytics, we know we can do today. These are some of them. Aquifer, well levels, chemical delivery, groundwater, again, I mentioned fuel tank, even environmental monitoring, wind, rain, the amount of, you know, again, rain that you've had previously, if we ever do get rain again. And then from pressure, water quality, and soil pH. There are endless possibilities from this that we have the capabilities of. Really, what we're going to try to do in this proof of concept is customize it, and it's not just one fits all. There might be needs of one grower that is completely different from another grower. We want to be able to have the ability to go in and customize these to benefits each grower, not say, "Here's what we offer, take it or leave it." Right? And that's really the big plan in a lot of this. So really, and just wanted to get into an overall systems benefit, from the county's perspective, from the GMA's perspective, everything that we deal with now is reduction of water, cost, operating cost, and overhead. So what we're going to prove out in our proof of concept is the benefits to the county and to the GMA. And the first of all is, is basically, the system's accurate reporting, which will free up now, my understanding from the county, is about 40% of their time is being utilized manually on these accounts, time spent to manually report. Now, as Tully had mentioned, there's still some verifications and things you'll need, but that 40% then can go into reallocating resources for other things. And I'm sure there's a lot more topics that you, you know, have here every month or week that you have, that they can now start to reallocate some of those resources. Beyond that, we can try to cut down costs. When you cut down overhead, you cut down labor time, you have cut down overhead. And everything that you do, obviously, in the county or city, goes back into the consumer cost. So it can lower some of the pumping costs and other, and there's a lot, other extended benefits to this, that you can then start to use multiple resources for multiple systems from multiple facets of the city or the county. And the meter options, even though I come from a meter company, that's what we do. We do, you know, the system side. There was no business case, even when I came in as a proprietary, there's no business case for the GMA. That's why we developed this partnership. And as far as the metering side goes, we understand that their own, landlords own these meters. The only thing that we want to help with and have the capability of doing is enabling those meters to tie onto this system, whether it's a retrofit, which is changing out a register. Some of them we looked at already, are already compatible. So we're going to run into some that are already compatible that we can tie onto, others that just need a register change to become compatible, and others may be an entire meter change depending on age of those meters. So that's really, from a meter side, and what we're trying to do, we're here to help enable a system, not sell meters or tell you what you, you know, have to have in your land or you have to use our product in order for it to work. That's the definite interoperability, so you don't have to do that. Also, with the data benefits, the two places that we've visited the last two days are endless. The information and the amount of resources that, from where we've visited, they've invested to capture data is astronomical to me. It was just, it was eye-opening. So for us, what we're trying to enable is a system that's already up that all the other growers can tie on, and like I said, customize, to be able to utilize some of the same data and functionality that some of the other growers have already invested in and started off with this tech and Internet of Things. So that's really our goal. So to sit here and say what the data can be, it's really, after the last two days, it's endless. The one key to this, and not only for the county, the GMA, I run into this in LED TV, the cities, everything else, especially with everything into the news of data being out into the web base, you know, out into the cloud. Our data is encrypted and secure. You own the data, so this data isn't any personal data or anything that's out into the cloud. It's just reads, it's minimal data that's encrypted that's brought back. And what you do with the data from there is really the benefit to this system. So again, I always get that, so I want to be very clear that that's part of it. And customers would be able to manage their data remotely. The couple that we went to, they've got servers on site, you know, they're set up in one facility. This would give you the capabilities to, whether you're in your home, whether you have an off-site office, whether you're out in the field with a laptop, right, a tablet, to be able to access this from any location. And again, I had spoken to this earlier, the GMA sustainability plan. When we first started talking to the county, there was an understanding of, we've got time, resources that we've allocated to this. You know, we've talked and said, "This is a program that we need to be progressive on." As we started to talk more and the capabilities of what we can do and how we can help with this, really, this is an element of this project. So it wouldn't be taking time away from the sustainability plan. It would actually help integrate the part of that. Totus, summary of what we are presenting as LoRa Partners, is the LoRa Partners are often the FCGMA, a commitment to invest significant research and development dollars on our part to the FCGMA for a six-month proof of concept. Now, there may be other things that we get in and we want other phases, six, nine months, whatever. We're flexible with that. We've gone to other communities, counties, cities around the area. We've got some of the same offers, but this is our first offer because of the uniqueness of this area. We think that this will really test us, and if we can prove it and it'll work here, it'll easily work anywhere else that we've been talking to. So the partner with the growers is also to develop these customized solutions. We're not just going to come in, put it in a system and say, "Look, here it is." Train you so that you have to learn and understand how to use it. What we want to do is bring in, and that's phase two, to sit down, work with you, have you educate us, really, how to utilize this so that we can customize it and make it a viable tool for the end user. And really, the invested resources developed, because again, this is one piece. The rest of California, across the country, the Midwest, there's a lot of other applications that, with the feedback and partnership with this proof of concept, that we can then utilize for us to expand and take to other areas, not only California, but the country. So really, that is my overview of what we're partnering with, what we've been in discussions with, and what we're offering.
Corey, let me see if there's any directors have any questions at this point? Steve?
Sure, a number of questions from a combination of Corey and Tully, so...
Okay.
I think I probably would start with Tully on this, and that is, can you tell us, first of all, have you identified some growers that are willing to do this?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And just to that point, I think we've got one today that when we first got there was a little standoffish. Once we finished at the end of the day in the tour, and what we're really trying to accomplish, my understanding is he pretty much committed to, oh, you're actually here. Well, he wasn't part of it. It was Martin, so I don't want to speak for him. And by the way, just to let you know, you've committed to this whole thing. So, and yes, so that is, and that's really our point, right? We don't want to go in and say, "Here's the locations, we're going to force them in." Really, for us as well, is we want to make where they make sense. And again, and this is what we talked to Martin about today. He wasn't really worried about where he had R&amp;D set up and the capabilities. He's worried about the things that now he couldn't do with his R&amp;D because he didn't have the capabilities of long range. So we did point out some of those, and I think that Tully and his group had already done some of those.
So you feel confident you're finding the 20, you can find the 20 locations to be able to do this?
Yes, that's correct.
My question, I think, probably for Tully. Tully, can you be as specific as you can? What are the advantages for the GMA of doing this? Can you start listing advantages for me?
Well, I think there'll be several.
I've kind of heard about this, but we haven't heard it. Why is it good for GMA?
I think accuracy of reporting. I think the reduction in the administrative burden, so it takes the burden off of the well operator, and it also takes the burden off of the staff of having to interpret the results or go back and forth, sometimes numerous occasions with the well operators to verify the information. I think it also provides consistency of results, and so we're getting, so even if we have meters that read in different fashions, we get consistent results back, which allows, as the board is looking at the plan and developing the plan and looking at the measurable objectives, we get a more instantaneous read of that, so we also don't have that time delay in there. So those are several.
Is there, this proof of concept, is there a cost to the GMA for the proof of concept?
There is no cost to the GMA for the proof of concept.
So just, it's completely cost...
It is a risk-free proof of concept.
A risk-free proof of concept period to see if this thing works.
And again, it's R&amp;D for us. That's what we're taking, it is R&amp;D.
Right, okay. The, if the proof of concept plays out, what is the scale? I know you don't have all the answers yet, but what's the scale of the potential lower cost of this operating system relative to things that we've looked at so far?
Oh, that's a very difficult question to answer. We haven't gone into that level of detail at this time.
So then let me ask you this. What are the, what are the factors that might indicate lower cost? Are there any?
Oh, I think there's several, and I think it's...
What are those?
The compatibility of the meters. And so the previous systems were almost, you had to remove what you had and do a total replacement. In this case, we have the option or the opportunity to look at the different meters or the different registers, different components of the system, to be able to adapt them to this system. We also are building on the back of the information technologies, the county IT group's network. And so we have that established already in place, and so you don't end up with all of the costs. And I think then you're looking at a reduction in cost because you're not on cellular. And so your monthly operating costs are dramatically reduced.
Jeff, I might have an answer, too.
So, we're going, I've been involved. Do I need to be a...
Yeah.
While at this point, nothing can be promised, we have given them a workout in that regard. And, you know, you're looking at order of magnitude less than what the previous proposal was that we brought to you that was cellular, if this proves out. Now, we had a conversation today with the Gram codes, both Jurgen and Marty, and Marty said, "One of my sensors, 8,000 bucks." These guys say, "One of my sensors, 400 bucks." Now, we don't have, we don't know if that's apples to apples yet, but that's the kind of numbers that are flying around. It's a much less expensive in all the conversations, but that will be proven out in...
What's the order of magnitude on the monthly cost? That's the sensor...
Oh, yeah. When we were looking at cellular, they were 40 bucks per pump, and then these guys have, they had a cost of about $6.50, $6.50 on the high end at one time. But again, there's a lot that goes into that, and some assumptions that were made that may not hold out. The larger expense, things that could throw it off, throw that off a little bit, is the number of meters that have to be replaced. That could be, that's the most expensive component of...
And quickly, just to that point, we go up against the cellular, and again, the cost analysis. Again, if I were to come in here at Mueller Systems to build a business case, probably what you did previously, I would have just walked away from it, because I could have never made a business case based on the system... Right, the condensity. I mean, typically, you've got 1,000 meters, 200 square miles. There's no business case for it. And I think for us, when we come in here, if you take a look at the lifecycle cost as well, recurring revenue from us against, you know, our competition, you're talking percentages based on, you know, monthly recurring charges to the competition or other proprietary companies that can do minimal to this.
So in the big picture, Jeff, could you stay here?
Sure, sure.
You've done some looking at it. So in the big picture, it's not guaranteed we could have a free proof of concept and potentially significantly lower cost of operation of a system.
That's correct, relative to what we brought your board the last time.
Relative to the ones that we've had before, right? Okay. And then, do you agree with Tully in terms of the likelihood of much less administrative time once this is all put in?
I do. A lot of our time is spent, and that 40% is a high number, and it would include some of the enforcement that's required because you have non-reporters. But we spend a lot of time with that. Those efforts could be redirected at important parts of whatever we're doing, sustainability plan, et cetera.
And is there, trying to look on the downsides of this, is there a risk that there will be meters that are going to come in as really expensive meters that we don't know, what kind of assurance do we have? We don't, you know, we don't get into it, and then we have meters that are, you know, $8,000 meters.
Just quickly, we're, we've been working on that, and we're about halfway through with that now. That was one of the big drivers as well that I figured that we needed to know upfront. Again, it's great with the proof of concept and, you know, the costs and things, but on a larger scale, if we go ahead and we can't make the business case, that's why Tully said, and Jeff said, there'll be some different factors of cost per month. There's also a way that we've got an entire list that we worked with to get basically the models. And so we're finding out what the retrofit and what need to be changed. Right now, the majority of what we've looked at, we've gotten prices on some of them, again, this isn't all, of ballpark $100 retrofit to some of the meters. So that's really...
During the six-month proof of concept, I'm sorry to be my line, during the six-month proof of concept, will you be able to get the business side of this checked out also?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I had a chance to meet with Corey and staff on this issue prior to the meeting. And I think one of the things that Corey, I think you told us, that your team is willing to put in a quarter of a million dollars is your budget...
Absolutely.
...to do a proof of concept at no cost to us.
Yes.
You say, "Why would they do that?" Because really, they see the market bigger than Ventura County. And if they can make it work in Ventura County, they can scale it to the rest of the state. This problem is in Arizona, Nevada, all across the western states. So there, you know, this is not, this has business applications for them, but they need a test bed. We're right in their backyard. And one of the things I had said to them was, "It's very important that we go through this beta process, because the questions you ask that we, I think, all may have in this room are valid questions. But until we can actually determine that we can talk A to B, get that data into the county, let some growers, the 20 that they're starting to reach out to talk to, and see if it's useful, then they can't answer our questions." But all of the questions that you've raised, and I think a lot of us will have, will come at the next phase, when we now know that the system can communicate the data it does come in. Now, do we want to go down that road, and what are the cost factors? And that's why, in my discussions with Corey, I wasn't anxious to put a lot of money into this, and he recognized that this is a giant R&amp;D exercise. It's basically a proof of concept, not only for us, but for them. And they're willing to put money up on the table to do that.
I haven't told my boss that yet, but...
If he's watching on camera.
Yes, okay, he knows that. He'll know by tomorrow.
Any other directors, before I go to the audience, have any, any question? Anybody in the audience, anybody want to speak on this issue? Yes, ma'am. You've, you've got to come up, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, unless we, unless we have a roaming microphone, and I don't know if we can do that or not.
Well, unless we have a roaming microphone, and I don't know if we can do that or not.
I'll pass it around for you. Okay, so I just have a couple of questions. Jeanette Lombardo, California Food and Agribusiness Advocates. So, the first question I have, Cory, you said the landowners are going to own these meters. So, I understand the operating cost for the Fox Canyon GMA is seventy thousand a year. What is the cost of the meter?
And that's-
This is a three-part question. I'm sorry.
Come on the places, right? This is what we said, that's still a part of the business case that we need to determine, correct? And that's why, when we started talking about the proof of concept and throwing around numbers and dollars and things and understanding that the landowners own this, is that we, I can stand up here all day long and tell you it's going to cost you a hundred dollars and it's going to work.
So, the forty percent savings-
The forty, okay.
Is based upon all the owners purchasing the system?
I will redirect that to Jeff, because-
It's forty percent staff time savings on GMA staff part. That's just a rough number, but that's redirected effort that could go to something else, right? Or in theory, if we didn't want to do something else, it's effort that could just go away.
Again, hold on here before, if I may. Before we get bogged down and try and put, cross the Ts and dot every I, let's make sure we understand.
So, last question.
Okay.
The, you indicated several different data types that could be collected for the meters that could help the growers. When it comes to transmission to the Fox Canyon GMA, is the encrypted data that's going to be submitted here only the reporting data?
So, I guess if I understand it from a transmission standpoint, so you're-
I'm sorry. Cory, your question's the same as the Gramco's had. Who gets, who's controlling the data? Your server, their server?
Right, okay. And there's multiple options to that. Typically, today, we have the capability of bringing it back to Mueller Systems who will own and operate and manage this. We also have the ability, and that's typically what we do with some cities and other counties. Here, one of the big concerns at Gramco was having the server onsite. You still have the capability of having the server onsite. That information comes back from the collectors, and it comes back onsite. So, then you would own, you would have and house, there's two sides to that, right? Do you have the IT resources and the bandwidth to manage that? And so, what I said is, really what we have is you can get all this data back. It's what you do with it. And how much resources does it take to analyze all this? We have the ability to come in and customize based on current needs of that data. So, if you had it at your system, you wanted the server onsite, that data comes back to you. We can install programs or, and I'm going to make it sound really easy because to me it is, but the other guys that have to write it, it's a little more difficult than this, that then can customize this, right, for your needs so that you're just getting the information that you need.
It's not going to anyone else.
No, it's not going to anyone else.
Okay.
Sure.
Robert Aranio, Cressy Mutual. Is your system going to be transmitting real time, or will it be a daily dump of data once every 24 hours?
It has a capability of transmitting real time. It's a two-way network that has a capability of real time. You can transmit however you want, right? Depending on battery life. You can get it every five minutes, where you can ping it and get it real time, or you can collect the data and bring it back four times a day and then use that analytics to whatever it is you're doing with the data. But it has a capability of real time, yes.
Is the system strictly a passive monitoring, or is there able to take that information then and use that to drive another piece of equipment?
That's beyond my level of knowledge. That may be, I have to defer to one of my co-partners back there.
Okay.
Brad? I just don't want you to answer.
Sure. Hi, Brad Martin from Senate, and we provide the network. It really depends on the application. So, it's a bidirectional communication stream. Again, it's limited to the application and how you utilize the data. So, it really does depend on the application provided. But as Cory mentioned, we can have as much data transmission as you want. It really depends upon the level of battery life. But by nature, it's low-power WAN, so it's not cellular. It will not compete with a video phone. That's not what it does. It's low-power. It's built for the world of sensors, so that is really the core competency in this. But again, the overall usage of the data is really based a lot on the sensor type and the application utilizing that data.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Okay.
Anybody else? Anybody want to? Yes, sir, you've got to come up or get the microphone.
I'm getting my exercise.
Thank you. It's like Wheel of Fortune. My name is Jeff Barry with GSI Water Solutions, and really, the question has to do with some of the other capabilities of the system. We're working with some of the growers up in the past roble space, and in addition to the flow monitoring, which is obviously really important, they're also interested in automating and communicating and evaluating the soil moisture information using capacitance probes, so they can optimize where the moisture front is in their particular crop, as well as using it to transmit water level information from their wells, so that they can have real-time information about where the water levels are before they start pumping air. The point is, is that, you know, you want to get a lot of acceptance for this program, and I think that if there's more application, more benefit to the growers, such as those things, I think that would go a long way.
And again, thank you, and which is perfect, because, do I need a mic for this?
Yeah. Oh, I got to go back. But you got it happening. So, that was a lot what we went through with Martin today, and that was a main concern, and really, the cost of what it takes for him to do that today. Yes, we have the capabilities of doing everything that you just mentioned, and really, that is the reason for the proof of concept. Like I said, I can stand up here and tell you all the benefits to you. I'm not really educated enough from your side, in your industry, to know what the real needs are. So, that's part of the proof of concept, which would be Phase Two, which would be able to not only tell you I can do it, to show you how I can do it. So, really, that's part of what we want, is the feedback and the partnership to be able to utilize some of the things that would most benefit you. Because we're going to put this system up, and it has all these sensors that none of them benefit the growers. It doesn't mean anything.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I'm looking at the agenda item. It's a receive and file presentation, and authorize staff to assist on a proof of concept for a smart metering network. Item one basically says that. Item two says, again, authorize staff. So, let's have a discussion on that at the board. My sense is, is that it's a no-cost item at this stage of the game to the GMA. A lot of the questions that I think folks are answering are all valid, and before we go down that road, we will have those questions answered as they gain more knowledge. That's the whole point of this stage of the game. So, my sense is, we ought to authorize staff to go ahead and proceed on this issue, given the fact that this group is putting a lot of time and effort in there, and we've already reached out to some growers. There, I think you've already looked at the possibility of other growers, and you'll reach out to them as well and see if they want to participate. Again, it's all voluntary. No one has to do it if they don't want. So, what-
I move to receive and file the report and to authorize staff to assist with the proof of concept, including the installation of meters on up to 20 agricultural extraction facilities.
Could I ask you a few questions first?
That's a motion.
Yeah.
One question I just was thought of as the discussion was winding down, the audience was, what's the anticipated level of staff involvement in this test process?
I think at this stage-
Is this consortium going to take care of the whole proof of concept process? Or is there going to be some staff involvement as well?
There'll be some staff involvement in providing some of the information, some of the well information and whatnot. So, we'll have to give them from our existing files and the information and data that we currently have. That should really be the extent of our involvement. We'll work with them as they're working through the proof of concept, meet to hear on what's going well and what may need improvement. So, staff time should be very limited.
Minimum, okay. What's the, this service, is it anticipated, I guess this is a question for the gentleman, is it anticipated this service is a, going to be a turnkey service for GMA? Your consortium, your company will provide the service, maintain the meters, service all the equipment, and make sure it all works every month?
Yeah, so, again, with the metering side of it, from a network standpoint, the service side of it, the software, that, again, that's one of the things that I was talking about, with the option for us to host that information. There's a couple of ways of doing it, but yes, we have, it'll be a turnkey solution. That's why we have the four partners involved that we do. And as far as management, monitoring, as far as the system, not the data, but the health network of the system and the metering, again, we can come out and say, look, there's no connection here somewhere. Our system is fine, something with the meter. We're not going to go out and check the meter, but we can assist and help with, you know, retrofitting or what needs to be brought back onboard to that meter. So, yes, it is a turnkey, and this is a proposed for the proof of concept.
Turnkey is a possibility. These guys have shown us the way they can do turnkey. We've heard from some of the growers that they may not want it that way. They may want to be the intermediate host of the data, so we don't see it, and then send us the data along. So, the world of possibility is open. No, it's not the intent that this is turnkey, but that's there if you want it.
I'm sorry, I meant by turnkey, the installation part.
I'm thinking of the software.
Oh, no, turnkey for me is just the installation part. Well, I'm thinking more on a level of, one of the problems I had in the past with the automatic metering concept is the fact that, yes, we may save staff time in terms of meter reporting efforts, but we would probably duplicate that same effort in terms of having new staff, additional staff, to maintain and service all these new meters. And so, if, how is this different than that concept?
One possible-
Previous ideas we heard, you know, when we started to get into the whole concept of annual maintenance and whatnot, and I think we heard from Caiegas, the concept of managing an automatic metering program wasn't just a slam dunk. We saved a bunch of money.
Sure. And again, like I said, the system that we have, we've gone down both paths, right? And again, from me at Mueller Systems, from a proprietary standpoint, if we came in from just a metering aspect, we have those capabilities. You can manage the market. It's a little bit unique here, is the fact of the landowners own the meters. So, for us, that's part of the learning curve for us. That's part of the information that we want back. How can we best utilize and help the landowners with that part of the program? You know, we don't, go ahead.
Okay, so, it can happen either way. Board's going to have some policy issues, provided this works, you know. You've got to see that they can do what they say. But, for example, your board might say, hey, this means this much to us. We'll pay the monthly maintenance fee. And that six fifty, that's six dollars and fifty cents a month, the first proposal I saw, it was just them guessing at what we wanted. But that six fifty included the maintenance of the system. So, it's, they don't have an intent one way or the other, other than to prove this thing works, and this is distance right now and power we're talking about. And then it becomes a discussion, a more of a public policy discussion, and shopping car, or a shopping menu for your board.
Okay. Dave?
Just another personal question. What types of data can the system transmit? Video also? No, no, I will, I'm going to refer to smarter guys for this.
Chip maker, chip man.
Yeah, absolutely. These guys-
No, this is Network Man.
Network Man.
Yeah. I know, like the Power Rangers.
Yeah, so, it's described, it's low-power, low-bandwidth applications. It's really made for the world of sensors, and there's lots of different ways that you can choose to send that data. So, but it depends highly on the application that you're trying to utilize. But in general, it's not a video network. It's not meant to take over the cellular market and replace FaceTime or cell phones. It's meant for the world of sensors. So, again, sensors mean a lot of things from what we described up here, but in general, not for video.
Okay. All right. We have a motion on the table. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Robert?
Can you do a motion on a receiving file item? When the motion is not in agenda?
Yes, it has, man. I read it, word for word.
No, it's your agenda says you're receiving and file.
And number two, authorize staff to assist with the proof of concept on page two.
Okay, hold on. Let me go to the source. Al, tell us what we need to do to give staff direction to go forward.
Oh, thank you. As I read the agenda, it tracks Director Craven's motion, so I don't see an issue.
Okay, all right. So, we have a motion, a second.
Do you see it on the other's page? You might see it, it's at the bottom of page one, and then it's at the top of page two, is the other half of the, it's receiving files number one, and then number two is authorized staff two.
Okay. All right. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? I heard no. Jessica. Where are you hiding there?
Chair Mulhart?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director West?
Yes.
Director Portchard?
Yes.
Jessica, before I forget, and I, because of the room, I totally forgot. Dave Schwabauer is here. I saw Andy Waters here. Bob Aranio is here. And I think those are the only three alternates that I see in the room, so let's make sure the record reflects that, okay? All right, let's go-
Chair, if I could just interject one quick thing. No problem with the agency proceeding along on this free concept. We can perhaps lay some questions to rest, and maybe this is new technology that ends up being a good thing. But I would suggest that there's a lot of important questions that need to be answered, including the ideas of maintenance and operation of such a system.
Okay.
Which was a significant effort previously.
So, I think the message you're hearing is that the proof of concept has to solve your dilemmas, and you have to anticipate the kind of questions that you're going to receive in the audience. Cost, reliability, who owns it, data. And I think with the 20 growers or wells that they're going to try to target, they're going to prove the system actually can communicate, and they'll address a lot of these issues. And we'll put you through the wringer at that point in time.
Next.
Okay, all right. Okay?
Next.
All right, let's go to the next item, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Mulhart and directors. For the record, my name is Rick Beergoot. I'll be presenting item number two today, which has to do with the proposed objectives associated with seawater intrusion, migration of poor-quality water, land subsidence, and pumping trough depressions, in order to facilitate groundwater sustainability plan development. So, essentially, today, your board is being asked to set management objectives for four long-term issues. That's the purpose of today's meeting. The issues are seawater intrusion, migration and intrusion of poor-quality water, land subsidence, and pumping trough depressions. What are management objectives? It's very simple. Their objectives, such as for water level or water quality, which if met, are going to lead the agency towards sustainable groundwater management in line with SIGMA. Now, the objectives aren't the kinds of things that you just set and ignore. They have to be reviewed from time to time to make sure that they're on the right track. Why are we here? Why is this important? These objectives need to be known early in terms of groundwater sustainability plan development. If they're not known, the development of the GSP will be slow. Cost proposals will be less certain, and over time, as the plan is developed, basin yield and efforts that will follow that will be uncertain. These objectives, they're proposed, they don't limit basin-by-basin groundwater management approaches. Actually, they're set up in a general enough way that they're actually very flexible. So, any types of solutions that could help meet these objectives would be available. And they're not new. These objectives are not new. They were discussed as part of the agency's Issues and Problems List from April '14 through '15. You may recall, there was a lot of stakeholder involvement in that process. People commented, people discussed, what are the big deals in the agency? What are the options that we have? What should we look at? What shouldn't we? So, the objectives that we're talking to your board about today are not new. They were actually discussed through that process, which has helped frame what we're here to talk about today. Also, along the same lines, that they're not new, there are also objectives- Also, along the same lines, that they're not new, there are also objectives in the agency's 2007 Groundwater Management Plan, to address these safe types of issues. We have discussed these with TAG. We did modify objectives based on discussions with TAG on July 30th, and reached consensus. So I'm going to jump off from here and go into a series of slides for each of the four objectives that we're asking your board to set today. So the staff report has four separate appendices in it. I've got a series of slides for each appendice. So I'm gonna go through these, but it's, it won't be a very lengthy presentation. So seawater intrusion, that's the first one. The proposed objective is to stabilize the seawater intrusion front at its current position. The 2007 Groundwater Management Plan objective is to maintain groundwater elevations high enough to prevent further seawater intrusion, or similar. And of course, the issue is seawater intrusion has been documented, it's been monitored, and unabated, it will continue to advance, resulting in degradation of groundwater quality. You may recall that in 2010, United Water Conservation District prepared a geophysical study. This is a map showing the upper part of the lower aquifer system, the, the TDS in the upper part of the lower aquifer system. The darker colored areas have higher TDS. So this was one effort at determining where the current seawater intrusion is. This is from 2010, of course, so it's somewhat dated.
Can you go back, please? What's, I see the code, dark blue, light blue gray, but there's no code for the brown. What's the brown?
The brown would be water that doesn't have a high level of salt in it. And Tony, correct me if I'm wrong.
Background.
Okay. Here's a map showing more current data. So what we just showed you was from 2010. This is data from last year, showing chloride concentrations in a series of specially constructed monitoring wells along the coast. And what we're seeing is that in some of those wells, the amount of chloride is increasing. And what that tells us is that seawater intrusion is occurring in some of those zones, because the chloride is increasing. So in order to meet the objective, I'm, so I'm getting to the how, the objective, if you will, is the what. The how, in terms of how are we gonna meet the objective, that's going to be worked out through the GSP development, but we thought it was important just to provide some context to your board, what might be necessary to meet these objectives. So developing a more clear baseline, certainly that's important. Raising groundwater elevations would be part of it, and again, clear criteria. What are the, what are the milestones? What are the levels of groundwater that are being, you know, are considered protective? At what point, when groundwater quality or groundwater level reaches a point, do we begin to get concerned? Those types of things. So those are sort of the, some of the seeds of the how it would be met. But again, that will come through development of the GSP. So I'm going to, what I would like to do is move on to the next objective, and the next, and the next, but if your board would like, we can stop here and discuss this, or I can just continue.
Just have one question?
Yeah.
What was the original objective, sorry, what was the original objective of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency when it was established by the state? Was it to stabilize, or was it to reverse?
Saltwater intrusion. That's a good question. My recollection is it was to stabilize it, but I'd have to go back and look at the act specifically.
Anybody know?
The, the act only required the agency to address seawater intrusion, so.
It didn't use either term.
Provide a lot of guidance in terms of what that mean, halt it in its track, push it back, just to address.
Thank you.
I have a point, and I'm a little bit hesitant to even say it, 'cause I'm not a hydrogeologist. And talking with folks who are, I'm, what stands out to me when you, when you said, could you go back to that first slide where you said what the objective is? Stabilize seawater intrusion front at current position. It's my understanding that seawater intrusion, characterize it as a front, it's not really technically a vertical wave of water coming in through all geologic, geologic strata, that in, that in fact, it, it's, it's a highly variable. I mean, these, the maps that we see here in our meetings do a good job of giving us a visual of where we were, where we're going, and I think it's important, you know, I'm not saying those are unvaluable, but I think it's important to make the point here that, this is a new understanding for me, just recently, that you shouldn't think of seawater intrusion as this line on a map that kind of arcs through the aquifers, but rather, it has fingers and points, and in some places, places where you think there ought to be saline waters, there are not.
Yeah, you're right, it's more complicated than, you know, just what sometimes we call plug flow or piston flow moving in. You're right, there's, there's fingers, and some areas have more, some have less. So it is complicated.
What I would propose, Rick, is that you go through all of these fairly quickly, let's outline them, and then we can turn to the audience and board members for comments they have, and let that kind of help guide us, because you're off, you're asking for us to make a decision, and I need to hear from both the board and the audience. So let's go to the second one.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, next is migration of poor quality water. So the proposed objective is to abate it, do not allow it to degrade along the regional board's groundwater quality basin plan objectives without mitigation. The 2007 Groundwater Management Plan discusses migration of poor quality water. It talks about setting groundwater elevations to prevent groundwater degradation. It talks a little bit about the south and east and PV basins, and lays out some strategies to address the migration of poor quality water. The issue in general, migration of poor quality water is, depending on how we look at it, it's not good, because it will degrade groundwater quality. But in some cases, people do gain benefit from it. But either way, left unabated, degradation of water quality is, is not good, and beneficial uses could be lost. Your staff report describes some areas where this poor quality water is migrating. You're also aware that in some of these areas, there are desalters proposed to treat the poor quality water, such as East Las Poses, South Las Poses, the northern part of Pleasant Valley. United has even wondered if a pumping system in the Oxnard Plain would be beneficial for this. In the Las Poses, there is poorer quality water that has been pulled into that area. Actions, again, develop more clear baselines, make sure we understand clearly where this poor quality water is. Again, develop the criteria. What are we gonna do about it? Is there a problem? Are we going to monitor? Is there treatment necessary? Could be raising groundwater elevations, could be source control. Okay, moving on to land subsidence. Very simple, no net subsidence due to groundwater withdrawal. The 2007 Groundwater Management Plan generally talks about how overpumping has created land subsidence in some areas, and it recommends strategies to reduce groundwater extractions. I didn't list them all, but, but they're the usual strategies. Continue with the 25% cutbacks, bring in additional surface water, things like that. As you know, land subsidence causes the land to subside. Doing that requires that the subsurface become compressed or collapsed, and that will reduce aquifer storage capacity. It will also cause, or it can cause, infrastructure to be damaged. Pipes to not flow right, roads to buckles, those types of things. Subsidence is actually a very complicated process, and one of the things that none of us really know for sure is in areas that have subsided, will they subside again? Will they not subside again? And at what point might areas that have not subsided experience subsidence? So subsidence is a complicated process. The county's general plan, I'll show you a map of that in a minute, and I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. Areas of concern for subsidence, Oxnard Plain, Pleasant Valley, West Las Poses, and the Four Bay. The county's general plan has a map showing areas where it considers land subsidence a concern. I don't have a pointer with me, but the coastal area is, is a concern for subsidence. I'm gonna show you a map that will have a little bit more detail down near Point Mugu, but generally, the coastal areas are susceptible to subsidence. This is a map from a report recently released from 2014, but just to be clear, it reproduces some information from an older report. Jess, do you have a laser up there? Well, there's a transect you'll see down on the bottom, you'll see a red line, I'm gonna float a, a graphic into there. That, that box that I just dropped in there, it's from 1940 to 1990, there's been about two and three-quarter feet of subsidence in that area, believed to be responsible, or believed to have followed groundwater withdrawal. Along that line to the left, there's been subsidence, but not as dramatic, and then further to the south and east, along that red line, there's been some subsidence. But that is where the key subsidence has been documented. How do we, how do we prevent it? Actions, develop a baseline, and this is important. Right now, there is no systematic subsidence, subsidence monitoring program in the county. The information we have is from little studies here and there, and piecing things together. So developing a subsidence baseline would take additional information. Again, criteria is very important. At what point do we begin to, I don't wanna say the word worry, but at what point do water levels get to a point where management strategies need to be looked at again? Groundwater elevations would need to be set to a level that was considered protective, and some instrumentation may be necessary. Extensometers are a typical tool used for that. Okay, and the last objective is pumping trough depressions. So the proposed objective is to promote water level recovery, to mitigate or minimize undesirable results. Undesirable results is verbiage from SIGMA, that's why we use that term, and it can refer to a whole host of undesirable results. The 2007 Groundwater Management Plan acknowledges these depressions, and again, recommends reductions in extractions or delivery of other water to reduce extractions. When groundwater extraction occurs at a rate faster than the aquifer can be recharged, that will lead to pumping trough depressions. Some of these are short-term, some of these are longer-term, some of these are very long-term. Especially for the longer-term ones, this can lead to water quality degradation, loss of storage, higher costs, higher lift costs, costs to deepen wells, stream flow depletion, land subsidence. The table one in the staff report describes an area, or describes a number of areas where these depressions are. I'm gonna show you a series of maps, which I think will help. What I'm going to do is use the 2014 Upper Aquifer System and Lower Aquifer System Potentiometric Surface Maps that your board has seen before. I'm gonna show you the aerial photo, I'm gonna bring those maps in, I'm gonna detail out very briefly where these cones of depression are, it'll be obvious, and, and then I'll conclude the presentation. So this, of course, is an aerial photo of the area. The red line is the agency boundary, and then the groundwater basins in kind of a light green color are shown in here, the Oxnard Four Bay to the north, Oxnard Plain, central western part of this image, and Pleasant Valley further east. This is the 2014 Upper Aquifer System Potentiometric Surface Map, and you'll see roughly mid-screen, roughly along a north-south line, we've got these two depressions, one in Pleasant Valley to the north, and one in the plain, and a little bit in PV to the south. So these depressions have existed for some time, not exactly in that same size or magnitude, but these depressions have existed for quite a while within the agency. And here's where they are, again, just on the aerial ortho photo. And this is just a fade. Okay, and then when I go to the lower system, see a similar issue. So here, we're bringing in the full limits of the agency. You can see in the north, we have the West Las Poses Basin, the East Las Poses Basin, South Las Poses. And of course, Pleasant Valley and the Oxnard Plain. Here are the, here is the 2014 Potentiometric Surface Map, and you'll recall that the, you know, the darker colors, the redder colors are where these cones of depression are. A little bit about this, starting from the top right, in the East Las Poses Basin, over the years, it hasn't always looked like that. Early on, seventies, eighties, the water levels were generally lower near the western part of the basin. Over time, the water levels have become a little bit lower in the northern-central part of the basin. So we move over to the left, into the West Las Poses Basin, you're gonna see two cones of depression. Those have existed fairly constantly for quite a while. Different sizes, different magnitudes, but it's not uncommon to have those there. In the Four Bay area, further to the left, here in 2014, we're showing depressed water levels in the Four Bay. That area fluctuates more, as you know, we don't always see the cone of depression in the Four Bay. Further south, you see the much larger area, and that covers part of the Oxnard Plain and Pleasant Valley. That hasn't always been like that. And years back, the groundwater elevations were actually lower in the northern, or the northeastern part of Pleasant Valley, but with the, with the introduction of water from up gradient, water levels have come up there, and they're lower right now, where they're shown in the bottom of the screen. And your board is also aware that there is interest in installing desalters, such as the North Pleasant Valley Desalter. So one of the things that will be important for your board and the agency to discuss is for the North Pleasant Valley Desalters and other desalters, when the proposal is to lower the groundwater elevations further, you know, at what point might that cause undesirable results? So. And here's where those are, just on the aerial photo. And then here's that image with the blended. So again, actions, you'll see a common thread throughout all these actions, which are that water levels may need to come up. Here, what we're recommending is that for all those areas where these pumping trough depressions exist, let's find out what the undesirable results are, and tailor solutions to those. So again, thinking more along the lines of how are we gonna handle these issues in the different basins, we'd have to develop clear criteria to meet those objectives. And at this point, this is my last slide, we recommend your board consider and adopt the objectives and the appendices in order to create a starting point for the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And just so your board and the audience knows, adoption of the objectives doesn't limit future analysis or stakeholder involvement. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any directors have any questions off the top of their head? We'll return to ourselves later. We'll return to ourselves later. Anybody in the audience? Steve. Where is the hand mic?
I can capture.
Okay. So, you don't have to come up. You can stay where you are.
Okay. Steve Bachman. There are some things that came up at the technical advisory group meeting, and I just wanted to kind of reflect on some of these. I might say that...
John, you can stay back there. We'll bring the mic up.
That some of our comments that we made were definitely integrated here. One of them, for instance, was on pumping depressions, whether or not pumping depressions were always bad. And so, I'm glad to see now that that's tied to undesirable effects, that, to where the pumping depressions have led to undesirable effects. I think that's a more appropriate way to do it. And subsidence is the other one, and it's really tricky here. I don't think any of us have the solutions. We know we've had a small amount of subsidence, and small amount in the past compared to some places that have had a lot of subsidence, we have a very small amount. What we, there's some things we don't know for sure. One is subsidence occurs many different ways. And groundwater extractions and lowering of groundwater elevations is one of the methods. We also have oil field extractions. We have, of course, oil fields here. The other big one is what we call tectonic, that is, the amount caused by faulting and folding. And of course, the reason we have these deep basins with young sediments in them, in the, that have our aquifers in them, is because we have had tectonic subsidence, where the mountains have gone up and the valleys have gone down. Just to give you a feeling for how much that is, there's an oil well that's just outside the Four Bay, in which there's a million-year-old ash bed that is now down at 15,000 feet depth. So, there has been 15,000 feet of subsidence there in a million years. So, we're not talking about inconsequential amount. This is the kind of measurement, the things that can be measured. One of the things that was brought up at the technical advisory group meeting was, perhaps we shouldn't have such a strong language of saying, "No net subsidence will be our objective." Perhaps it should be more subsidence that would cause undesirable effects, that can be directly related to groundwater, changes in groundwater elevation and extraction. And I bring this up for a couple reasons. One, of course, we have to determine, and we do not know yet now, what the causes of all the subsidence in the future could be. I suspect that a lot of it's going to be tectonic, so we have to kind of see through that. We have really not done much monitoring in the past about this. I think we need to get a good base of information before we can really set a really strong objective, because we don't really know how these basins, exactly what's going on in these basins. The other problem we have is, we know that we had, from up to 1990, the time that we, that the USGS had measured the subsidence, we had, and that was very close to what our low historic groundwater elevations were in many places. So presumably, we stopped having such, that kind of subsidence after that time. We're not sure of that. The problem is that we have a lot of residual subsidence that could go on after we raise water levels. And so, if we say no net subsidence, perhaps we'll be measuring something that is a residual from past activities that have nothing to do with current activities. So, I think we need to be, since we know so little about some of these things, I'm really worried about saying no net subsidence. Perhaps what we need, because we need to get a lot more information, perhaps that objective should be more, you know, subsidence direct, you know, related to current activities that cause undesirable effects. Undesirable effects, of course, in the legislation for sustainability is a key thing. And I think all these things should be linked to that. Clue of the other ones are, I think this should probably be linked that way as well.
Okay. John? Can you get it set?
You made me nervous.
Yeah, go ahead.
It made me nervous today when you said you were biking across Iowa. I thought maybe you'd get stopped and ask if you were running for president or something. You know, you probably ran over a few people. I'm John...
I asked, "Can somebody fix my flat tire?" That was the sum total of my...
I'm surprised you didn't have a reporter come up and ask you. My name is John Matthews. I'm here on behalf of the OPV Group, the Landowners, Ag Landowners Group that I mentioned last month. I know Supervisor Bennett and Chair Malhart weren't here, and if you had an opportunity to review that, we basically have tried to form a group. We have formed a group. We actually came together and filed a, we have a corporation now, and Charlotte, I hate to break your heart, but we came up with OPV Agricultural Landowners LLC, which is not too sexy, but that's the best we could do. I'm going to speak just basically to the process, and give you some encouragement on the process from my standpoint, from the group's standpoint. As you go about developing and refining these objectives, and coming up with the solutions, hopefully you'll rely heavily on the tag. And that process, I think, is a process that you need to look at closely, try and encourage that group to be independent. I know it's your tag group, but hopefully use those good minds in there to give you some independent solutions, things like what you heard from Dr. Bachman. We're a little bit different from the LPG Group, in that we don't have a CAIGAS to staff us. So, we've actually gone out and asked landowners to donate based on a per-acre-foot basis, so that we can hire a hydrogeologist, and we're suggesting we're going to use Dr. Bachman. I would hope that the tag committee, based on Dr. Bachman's background and expertise, would consider letting him be, I guess you'd call it that, public person to serve on that, so that they can go ahead, they can refine these, they can get input. And the other thing, as you go through this, again, I think Rick's last comment was an important comment, that when you adopt this today, should you decide to adopt it, it's not the end, for any of us. It's something where we need to work on it. It may need to be tweaked along the way. And I think it's important that we, as stakeholders and your staff, reach out to the stakeholders. We've taken basically, what you beat on me for a few years, to say, "Why don't you guys out in the Oxnard Plain and get organized?" And like the guys at LPG, "Well, we finally got our stuff together, and we're moving down that road." So, it'll be a group that I think you can deal with, where you've got a large number of landowners that you can deal with. You'll get their input, and we'll try and provide input to you, and make sure that what we give is constructive and helpful in the process. So, that's just my two cents, is try and make the tag as independent as possible. I know it's, to some extent, have to be staff-driven, but I think you're going to have a lot of smart people around that table, and they ought to be able, to the extent you can, allow them to run their own show, and then come back in, give you their best thoughts on it, and then let the public join it for a while. Thanks. Any questions?
Let me go to the back of the room, and then I'll come forward.
Mike Morgan, City Councilman Cam Rio. I just came to watch Charlotte perform today, but decided I've got to say something after that report. We're talking about subsidence of the Fox Canyon aquifer below, but you're not talking about the subsidence of the one above that keeps growing. And that one that keeps growing is now affecting our groundwater below, because we're having to shut two wells possibly in the future, and Pleasant Valley's having to shut a well because the salt is invading the next aquifer. Because it keeps coming in, staying, and building, billions of gallons. You've got three peer reviews, and all have shown that that is growing, and there's billions of gallons of water there that needs to be... Are you got it? Okay.
Number two.
Well, I just got here, Charlotte.
Objective number two.
But I'm just saying to you, please consider the problem that we're going to alleviate by making good water out of that water that's flowing into that area, and maybe alleviating our water below. Because that's, to me, that's causing a problem now for all of us in the Pleasant Valley. With the water, the salt water, it's not water from the ocean, that's water from Simi Valley, the mountains. And that stuff keeps flowing. It's not stopping. They keep pumping it in the ground. They have to. So, please consider that as also mitigation for alleviating our Fox Canyon aquifer from getting more salt. So, we have to shut wells, and pretty soon you'll have any water. That's all.
Okay, thank you. John, or go to Terry. You're in the back. Stop it, Terry. There's no...
Yes, Terry Foreman. I'm part of the tag group. And you've heard a number of comments here about the tag members and the discussion that went on, and I think it's pretty accurately reflected in terms of discussion, so a little bit repetitive here. But just to clarify, I think the concern of some of the tag members was the term "adopt these objectives." And I think most of us felt that these are objectives to be studied as part of the tag, and of course, the whole process. So, I just want to understand, and would like to understand where you're going. I like the conclusion, is that these are objectives that are be, further to be established or fleshed out. And I think that's where the tag was coming from, is we're not ready to recommend to you that these are the objectives that be put in stone. So, I think the wording change might make everyone a little more comfortable, that these are all admirable objectives, and they should be looked at. But whether this board adopts these objectives today, I think a lot of people had concerns about that. So, just to clarify, I think where some of us were coming from.
John, I think you had your hand up.
Perfect.
John Gruther, grower in the West Los Poses and the Oxnard Four Bay. My thought, my comment was largely the same as what was just made. I'd like to point out a few other things. It's used very frequently in this package of material to use the word "abate." And the word "abate" troubles me, because the legal definition means to end or suspend, and I don't think that applies to the topics that are being considered for abating the migration of poor-quality water or the seawater intrusion. And the other use of "abate" is particularly used in describing weather phenomena, as in the storm abated, and it means to reduce or to lessen. And I don't know that "lessen" is the appropriate terminology. So, I would urge the staff and the tag group to be careful in the choice of words. Perhaps reverse, retreat, hold, restrain are more descriptive for communicating what we really are using as objectives. The other thing that I think needs to be pointed out is that these should be generalized objectives, that they're important. The real problem is, we just don't have enough water in these aquifers. And I would caution that if we become too hung up on the details of these objectives, and we lose sight of the real overall problem that we have in the GMA of just not having enough groundwater to work with, that a lot of these will be taken care of if we address that much more significant problem. So, I would urge us not to be focused too particularly on these four objectives, but to think of them as being goals that work toward the bigger objective of stabilizing and improving the groundwater resources.
Okay, thanks, John. Anybody else? Jürgen. Or, we'll just go across. Did you want to say anything? Andy? Okay. Then Jürgen, then we'll go to the back of the room.
Jürgen Gramco. I'm a landowner in the Oxnard Plain, and a member of the newly-formed Oxnard Pleasant Valley Landowners Group, and have the dubious distinction of being the president of that group.
My sympathies and condolences.
My concern is that, number of levels, but the general level is that the, these objectives are up for approval today after one tag meeting. And it would seem to me that you need to have more back and forth, more analysis of what the ramifications of these objectives might be. I also went back to the desk reference that Rob's firm put out in regard to how the Groundwater Sustainability Act deals with these particular objectives. And it said that, it says, "The plan requirements shall avoid undesirable results, which are defined as follows." And then it talks about significant and unreasonable seawater intrusion, significant and unreasonable degraded water quality, significant and unreasonable land subsidence that substantially interferes with surface land uses. So, that is a fairly broad calibration. It is a level of outlining these parameters that doesn't go down to this level of restriction yet. And so, having read that, and then reading the objectives and the rationale, stabilizing seawater intrusion, I think as presented, is pretty fair and reasonable. But then you go to the water quality parameter, says, "To the LA Regional Board Based and Plan Objectives." And further in one of those descriptive boxes, it talks about the TDS of the regional plan objectives being 700, 700 TDS. We've never had 700 TDS. We'll never get 700 TDS. So, I think it's important that we don't set unattainable standards. I mean, I think the point of this Groundwater Management Act is to get things from getting worse, from getting things under control, stop them from getting worse, and then get them to get better by supplementing water. I mean, John said it all. We know it all. This is the dance of the seven veils that gets us to a water project. I mean, at some point, we're just going to have to bite the bullet, do a replenishment fee, and generate some water. But if, in the meantime, we set unattainable standards, then this whole process is going to fall apart.
Okay. Who had a hand up in the back? No, over there.
Good afternoon. My name is Neil McGuire. I'm a member of LPG. To piggyback on Dr. Bachman's comments, I thought it was really helpful to hear from him some of the comments that tag had suggested that had been incorporated, and what appears to have been some comments from tag in other areas that were not incorporated into these objectives. And to be honest, I think it would be helpful to have in each of the four objectives categories here, a summary from staff of what they heard from tag, what was incorporated, what was not incorporated. I think for the, for those of us who are not on the tag committee, it seems that that back and forth would be, a summary of that back and forth would be relatively helpful. Jürgen had taken my comments with regard to quoting Sigma, and I think it is important to focus on that language in Sigma and in the statute, or in that statute. It's not tracked here, and it is more restrictive. And we saw some slides from GMA staff saying that that really wasn't the intent. The intent was not to foreclose, at this point in time, the spectrum of groundwater management tools that are going to be available to the, to the GMA through this Sigma process. But intentionally or unintentionally, that could be the consequence as a result of some of these objectives. And I'll tell you, I mean, we pump in East Los Poses, and we do not have a water quality problem with our well right now. It's possible that if that migrate, if that plume migrates further, that we might. That doesn't mean that we would necessarily want to stop the migration of the water, though. I mean, it might be better to have a water quality problem as opposed to a water quantity problem. And that's the type of flexibility that is going to be needed, that some of the stakeholders may ask for in the future. I think the other possibility would be what we heard from United Water several months ago, when they presented the very rough sketch of the Brackish Desalter Project that United and Tony Morgan are going through, that consideration process right now. Because that process, or that project, would involve, I think, two components that is going to be, that there's going to be an issue or potential inconsistency with these objectives. The first was, they essentially want to create a pumping depression that would then attract seawater. And then the goal would be to take out that seawater, treat it, and utilize it. And the merits of that projects are, I mean, that's far off, and I understand that, but we don't want to be foreclosing necessarily, at this point in time, those types of projects, those types of management tools, by adopting very narrow objectives that don't have that flexibility and are more constrained than even what Sigma is requiring at this time. So, that's it.
Rob Saperstein for City of Oxnard. Put a little context in for... Put a little context and framework around some of the things that other folks have said. The overarching principle in California under which Sigma also exists is constitutional provision that the water of California be put to maximum reasonable and beneficial use. And so I would kind of flip the objectives on their head, and rather than taking the prescriptive approach that, the way the objectives have been articulated, I would task the tag group, and I agree, and boy, let it go to everybody's heads on the tag, we have the smartest folks that are probably in the United States, sitting in our tag meetings, that their objective ought to be, how do we maximize and optimize the use of the available water resources in a way that, that is consistent with restrictive mandates of Sigma, but it's also consistent with maximum reasonable and beneficial use. And that's not the way these objectives are being articulated. And from my perspective, Lynn, you and I have had sort of this philosophical question for 15 years now, and we're here now where it's an opportunity actually to take the good work that's been done for the past 20 years by the GMA and rework it so that we have good work to be done for another 20 years. Because some of the, some of the framework, perhaps it's agricultural efficiency, perhaps it's, it's the historical allocation, needs to be reworked. But it's all one basket. And the basket, the overriding principle ought to be maximizing use of the water resources. And then the last piece of it is, GMA, we know geographically, is not all created equal. So the problems, I'd say it in a different way. The opportunities in the Los Poses area, particularly in and around City of Camarillo and in the south and east Los Poses, dramatically different than the opportunities in the Oxnard Plain. And now's our opportunity to be respectful of that. Harder, and my intention is not sensitive, particularly to Director Bennett, interpreting this as just another reason to slow down delay, that is not the City of Oxnard's objective. We have endured, you know, three, four years now of, of, I shouldn't, oh, I'll temper myself. The intention is not delay.
But I doubt, I think is what you wanted to say.
Yes, yes. And I'm not going to Iowa, and I don't intend to run for president. You know, all due speed, but, but, but opportunity, get it right. All due speed doesn't mean sort of flailing about and batting down the hatches. Because it's, it's an opportunity, and there are a lot of smart folks that can help us with it.
Okay. Anybody else in the room? Let me go back to directors, your comments or questions or thoughts.
Question.
Yeah.
First with respect to the subsidence question, the reference to net subsidence. Are we talking about net inelastic subsidence or something different?
Yes.
Or all subsidence?
No. We're talking about net subsidence due to groundwater withdrawal. So.
Which, which can be either elastic or inelastic. And if it's elastic subsidence due to groundwater withdrawal, why foreclose that?
No, that's, that's not, that's not the intent. We know that aquifers will, ground surface can move up and down a little bit as the amount of water in storage changes. What we're talking about is a permanent.
Inelastic.
Inelastic.
With respect to the second one, I, you know, obviously to sit here and say that, you know, I don't like the idea of cleaning up the aquifer, it would be kind of certain. But I was a little concerned with the construction of the proposed objective number two because it, it doesn't, because it isn't elastic, frankly. It seems rigid. Because it doesn't incorporate the, the significant and unreasonable standard in Sigma. And I too have some problems with adopting the regional water quality control board standard as, as not just a guiding principle, but as the benchmark to meet. A little different construction, frankly, to abate and or not allow groundwater quality to experience significant, significant and unreasonable degradation without mitigation would probably accomplish exactly what you hope to accomplish, but provide a great deal more flexibility in terms of implementation solutions, as opposed to tying us to a rigid, unbendable standard.
Okay. Steve?
Thank you. Do we have these on? Are they, they go on?
I think they're permanently.
As long as, as long as the button's up.
Yeah, great.
It's a different system.
Thanks. All right.
We don't have the classy lights that we folks have.
That's right, upstairs, right. Well, I really appreciate these comments. I think it's one of the real values of the tag and having a review by technical experts that have gone out there. I actually think that the processes work well as, as I read these and listen to the comments, as I read these. So these, these comments I'd like to make. Number one, I heard Mr. Gramco's comments about, you know, the basic point here is to not let things get worse. I think what's really clearly stated, unless I'm completely reading it wrong, is the purpose of the groundwater sustainability agencies and the purpose of the plan is to obtain sustainability. It's not a definition of don't make things worse. Some places, they're not sustainable, they're pumping at levels that are not sustainable, and they've got to change that. That's not maintain the status quo. So I think the question is, what is sustainable use? And then you, when we get to that sustainable use, then it's the maximum best use that you can, as was referred to. And I like to look at these things partially from the standpoint of reference to a public member. And my sense is, a public member, we have a large representation from people that are heavily using, and that's exact, very appropriate, and I think we're hearing really good comments from those people. I think if you ask this question from the broad public perspective of, you know, the broad public view of this, I look at these things and I tried to listen carefully to what people said, and the modifiers, I think, are really there. The gentleman back there that talked about, you know, well, maybe we want the negative groundwater, you know, the poor groundwater quality to continue to come, maybe there's a reason for that. If you read the way this came out of this collaborative discussion between tag and staff, and staff ultimately being responsible for this, it says, "Abate or do not allow groundwater quality degrade beyond basin plan objectives." Seems very reasonable, basin plan objectives. And so I probably disagree a little bit with Director West. It says, "Without mitigation." You could say, hey, there's, there's some mitigation that, I think that gives, creates all kinds of flexibility, you know, in terms of a mitigation for that. For, to, listening to Dr. Bachman talk about and make the point, I think it's helpful to make the point, all trough depressions are not bad. But I think that the other side of that is, you could say, most depressions are not good for groundwater management, particularly depressions that are down here below sea level. So while it may be a helpful modification, I don't think we want to get to the point where we use the fact that we can't say they're all bad to not say, we're trying to make sure we don't have that. So I look at what staff wrote, and it says, "Pumping trough depressions, propose objective, promote water level recovery to mitigate or minimize undesirable results." Doesn't say all depressions are bad. It just says where we have undesirable results, then we need to try to mitigate. So with each of these, I think that there are the appropriate qualifiers. And what I'm hearing staff say is, we need a starting spot, and we should have a starting spot as we try to go out there and talk to consultants and find out what data do we need. I certainly would at least say, we need the data to try to reach these, and then as data comes in, we may say, hey, we need to modify these things. But they're, they're, they appear to me to be the appropriate starting spots with the appropriate qualifying language that I think came from the tag's input to allow us to get started. So that's, that's my perception. Thank you.
Hi, Charlotte.
Well, I listened to what everybody said, and I'm going back and forth on a couple of them. But basically, I agree with Steve. I think this is a good starting point. These things are not going to be set in stone. I mean, I've never seen anything here that was set in stone. We've changed and gone back, and if, if these words don't work after we get a consultant on board and as we start going through and developing our plan, then they can be changed. But I agree that we need to move forward. We need to get something so that we can move on to get somebody to help us develop our plan.
Dave?
Mostly, I feel like the objectives are fairly reasonable, but with a few caveats. I, I also don't like the way the water quality objective is laid out related to the regional board standards. It fails to take into account historical groundwater problems that we've had that we may never reach. And it's those kinds of unintended consequences of objectives that will guide and form our plan writing process that concern me. It's, I think, terribly important that we have fairly broad, flexible objectives. I'm not saying we don't have them. But a comment was made that we, in effect, write them as trying to strive for not having undesirable results or significant and unreasonable effects. And I think that's important. Mr. McGuire made a very important example of how we, we may have a very important project that United is looking at that in effect violates the very objectives we're talking about right now. So we do need to have a lot of flexibility, and we need to concentrate on maximizing these water resources that we have. And I would add, in a sustainable way. And control was sustainable these days means a lot of things depending on who you talk to. And sustainable to me, as a water user, means that these aquifers are available for use for cities and farmers and the benefit of our general economy for generations to come. And that we're not getting to a point where we, where they're unusable. And so to achieve that long-range goal, it's going to require a lot of flexibility, some maybe counterintuitive actions that in the long run put us in the right place.
As I read through this staff report, it strikes me that we are in fact doing what, I think, one of the things that the Sustainability Act said, and that was, we're having a process of debating it in public. It may not be all the debate we want, but it is part of the process. So I am pleased that, that we're, as we've done at the GMA for years, we don't have a timer, we don't have a big red light here, and people can talk, and we do that. Second thing that strikes me as I go through this document is that I think it's easy to beat up on the GMA staff, if you will, and say, we need to be independent. Somebody's got to start the discussion, and they started the discussion with what they presented and took it to the tag, and now we're hearing that there's not total agreement in the discussion they started, and hence we're having that public review process. But at least we started a discussion, and they had to start at some point. And as I read through this, the starting point for their discussion was the 2007 Groundwater Management Basin Objective Plan that we worked on for a long time, trying to get a handle around the collective problems we have. And I think from a staff standpoint, that's a reasonable point to draft a starting point. I appreciate what John Grether said, and I think, John, you're right, that let's not lose sight of what we're tasking ourselves. We're tasking ourselves with what is sustainable. And what is sustainable is going to be crucial to the allocation scheme, going to be crucial to a market scheme if we come up with such a thing. It'll be crucial to how much water do we need in supplemental projects to bring onboard to make the whole system work. Just doing a plan and coming up with that sustainability number does not get us where we want to be, because that sustainability plan is going to be made up of a number of elements. What has happened between 2007 and today is, there is another plan that in my mind has kind of put down a different marker. And that is the Sustainability Act itself. And in this room, some folks outlined the language they used, which mimics a lot of what we said in the 2007 plan, but gives us a different set of verbiage to do that. And if we're going to write a sustainability plan, to me, the Bible to get there ought not to be the 2007 concepts, because they effectively been trumped by a state law that actually defines what each of these should be. So I actually believe that we ought to write those objectives in a broader sense and be more in compliance with what the Sustainability Act says, with the caveat that all of us are marching to one objective, what is sustainability? And it may be in the discussion of modifying objectives over time, we will actually tighten up some of that language that came from the state to apply to our particular case, rather than the methodology of going back to the '07 terminology and effectively making a commitment that will undo that terminology as we go forward, as we find things. And I, I believe we need to adopt objectives. I have problems with some of the wording that's written in these objectives for the reasons that I think folks have articulated. And I'm fearful that we're going to get ourselves bogged down at the front end of this exercise on language that if, if we, if, at the board level, at the staff level, we point to the act itself and say, that's what the act says, that's where we're going. We're going to write the plan they want, because that's what the law says. Then it, in my mind, it takes all of this energy that could easily be consumed on this one issue, and we don't get to the punchline that I think, John, you articulated very well. The punchline is not, the punchline is to get to sustainability over time. And I think what's really pushed me in that direction more than anything else is that I believe, for the first time in my years of doing this, we have growers in the Oxnard Plain that understand they're going to have to spend significant amount of money to get where they need to be. We've got cities, Camarillo is now doing it, Oxnard is doing it, going to spend significant amounts of money to take us to the next level. And United is proposing a significant modification to the PTP system, a significant modification to how we treat brackish water. All of those elements are part of the full package we got to get to at some point in time. And I don't want these objectives to be some kind of leverage that says, let's get bogged down and fight this particular fight. I think that we ought to adopt objectives that comply with what the Sigma, I was not aware that they'd actually put that in there, in those terms that you wrote, that I think you read, that Jürgen read. And, because the pushback I've heard is, the objectives are potentially counterproductive, that there's not enough public outreach in this process. You raised that issue to me earlier today. And my answer to that is, if we make the objectives comply with the Sigma law, Sigma law itself, that's squares filled, this process that we're going through right now, we are doing exactly what you talked about, and we need to do some more of it. We just agreed today to take a look at bringing in some kind of reporting system that may expedite our ability to really understand what we have. So from my standpoint, I think we're doing a lot of good things. And I don't want to get bogged down. And I don't want to get bogged down in an objective exercise that was built on the 2007 model, which served us for a period of time, but I think we all agreed a number of years ago it needed to be updated and was obsolete. And in my opinion, as I said, I think it's been trumped by the state law. And I don't think it would be that hard to allow the tag group, somebody said, "I would like to see the tag group be independent." I'm not sure what that means. There is no way that the tag group is going to operate in a vacuum without the GMA staff involved. I mean, it's just the nature of what we have to do, because we're ultimately responsible for it. That is our mandate. So I don't support that kind of model of some kind of independent group, "Go off to the mountain." And I don't think any of us want that. But to the extent that there are other models out there that we could use, and the Sigma document, to me, is that model, my recommendation would be not to adopt these objectives today. Send it back to the tag, send it back to staff, let's utilize the law itself. Those ought to be the objectives. Not get bogged down on this particular issue. Recognize that we're going to adjust it and change it, but let's keep this train going down the road to get to the punchline. And the punchline is, how are we going to manage the aquifers to make them sustainable? And at that point in time, the collective wisdom of everybody is, you know what? This particular objective needs to be tightened down in this particular area because of those consequences. But in this area, it needs to be modified to allow us to build a project or whatever. I think that's really the work we ought to be doing. I didn't come to this conclusion until after listening to all of you today. So I didn't, and I say that because I truly want folks to believe that this board actually listens. And that's, I think, one of the pushbacks we get. Do you really pay attention to what we're doing? Are we represented? Yeah, if you tell us what the issues are and they're valid, I'll listen to them. And that's what I'm telling you right now. So that's kind of where I fall. And how we resolve that between us, among us, I don't know.
If I could, because I suspect that your motion for delay here would be supported potentially on a three-to-two vote based on the comments that I heard. I just, as we consider a motion along the lines of what you're talking about, I would just like to make these observations. I don't know whether what Mr. Graham Cowell referred to qualify for the kinds of things that staff thinks we need in terms of objectives for hiring a consultant so that we can come up with the proper data we need to establish the plan. So that hasn't been vetted yet. We heard that here, that that hasn't been vetted, whether that's the case. I do know this, we could have, in this room, endless conversations about what is a significant impact, because we hear the significant, if it needs to be significant. I think a significant impact is very different, can be potentially very different than this is the objective, this is the standard, this is a standard established by some other regulatory agency, or this is the standard established by this board back in 2007, or whatever that is. But if anybody thinks that, I mean, we can create this with language that doesn't pin anything down and will constantly leave us in that situation. But the final thing I'd like to point out, as you talked about, let's keep the train moving down the track. This is one of the things we have to do before we can go to a consultant. If we say, "No, we're not going to take this action now, we're going to take this back, we are not keeping the train moving down the track, we're taking a detour to evaluate all of this again." And I think staff has made more than a good faith effort to try to address the very concerns here with the qualifiers. So that's why I don't think, I've heard anything that suggests, if we do this, we have put ourselves in a straitjacket. But I have heard that if we do this, we've appropriately addressed the concerns raised by some of the tag members and others here, and at the same time, we were able to move in terms of the consultant. So that's why I would not be supporting not doing that. I think I have tried to listen carefully. I think those are things we would keep in mind as we look at these objectives in the future. And so that, anyway, that's just a response to where you are there with that. But I think I understand where we'd probably go based on the comments.
I want to make very clear that my, and I appreciate, Steve, what you said, because it concerns me that if we make these little changes at the 11th hour, and I have a tendency to do this, and I recognize that's one of my issues. But anyway, I want to make it clear, I am not proposing that we debate this forever. There's going to be objectives. And that those objectives are simply to adopt the state's objectives, and then if that tag group gets into a debate on what is, in fact, the definition of sustainable and reasonable, those are board-level questions. That's what needs to come to the board. And at that point in time, that's when, in my opinion, the board sits down and says, "No, that's not reasonable to allow that aquifer to keep going south. That's not fair, and that's not reasonable." So I think there's going to be points in time where we're clearly going to have to make tough decisions. But right now, anyway, that's the answer, that's the answer to your question. Rob?
Where's the?
I think the box is here.
Yeah.
Who do you want me to?
Yeah, Jeff.
Jeff first?
Jeff.
Wait, hold on, Rob. I wasn't sure who's talking first. No, it doesn't click on. Sorry. There you go.
Rob Sapirstein, again. If at least one of the objectives of adopting objectives is to help staff move this along, I'm involved in these efforts all over the state. And there is no consultant that I'm aware of that feels that they need objectives from the local entities before they're willing to put their hat in to offer their assistance in helping create these plans. The agency can go out now with an RFP that says, "We are the Designated Sustainability Agency, and we want to get bids on your participation in helping this organization develop a plan consistent with Sigma." You don't need to adopt a set of objectives to get that process started. It may be helpful, useful for the board and for the constituents to keep this dialogue going, but, and I don't want any of the comments that I made interpreted to slow down the process of getting the proper help to staff to keep the process moving. The two are really independent of one another, in my mind.
Okay. Jeff?
Normally, I wouldn't enter the fray at this point, but I was out of the room with the Semtech team for a while, so I missed part of the conversation. But at least part of our objective in bringing us to your board at this time was our understanding that some of this needs to inform the model. You know, your board has a work on, Sigma requires that you work on three big things: governance, which you got down, size of the pie, which we need. And we need the models to inform that, and then how you divide the pie up. Now, part of what this does is it sets parameters for the modelers. So they're in the room, and I'm hoping they can come up and address this, so you make a fully informed decision here. But when I talk to Tony, "Where's our model? We paid you, you know? What are you doing? It's been four years or something." Well, we need to know what you guys want to do with seawater intrusion, for example. That affects the outcome of the model. So a model is one of the first steps in the groundwater sustainability plan, as far as I'm concerned. So in that way, this affects schedule. And I'd just like the modelers to speak to that. How much of this do you need to know to give us some idea of what the model, the results are yielding, right? So seawater is one I know I've talked with you guys about. I don't know about subsidence or the water quality. But remember, in my years of experience with this board, there's only been one thing that's non-negotiable: credits. Everything else is a turkey shopping bazaar in this room. You know, so just so you know, nothing gets set in stone. So that's Jeff's opinion. Thank you.
Jeanette Lombardo, and I'm going to put my California Women for Agriculture hat on here. I am the State Task Force Director for Water. Like Rob, I work around the state, and there are a number of different GSAs that are setting up tag groups. I don't agree with Mr. Bennett's comments on the collaboration of the tag with the staff. And I have concerns that I would like to address now, since we are in its infancy. One of the things that I see different from what's happening around the state, and this may go back to the comment that was made about an independent group, is that before anybody stepped in the room for the first meeting, the chair and the vice chair was already selected. The group did not select who that would be, and it is the staff. So is there a perception issue with that? The second issue is, there's participation that is blocked in the tag, and we can change this, it's very easy. We have alternates who aren't at the table. They're in the audience with the public. The only chance that they get to talk is at the end of the meeting with the other members of the public. And if there's a lot of members of the public there, that time could even be further reduced. And that is not allowing for adequate participation. My third problem is, I don't think the process, as of right now, allows for feedback to be incorporated into what you're reviewing today. We had one meeting on July 30. The packets came out the very next week for us to get. There was no time for anyone in the tag to digest it, to offer input to the staff, for the staff to change what went into the packet, for us to be distributed to us today. So not to be critical, I'm just saying, we still have not appointed two people to the tag. We only had one meeting that maybe we need to look at changing a few of these things. Thanks.
Tony?
There seems to be a perception that the tag is this overly formalized group. And it's actually a very informal session that occurred. There was open discussion, staff participated, the tag members participated, and at times, the alternates participated. It wasn't as if there was a wall there. There was the ability for folks to share ideas or opinions along the way. So I guess I'm not in agreement that we have this overly blocked-off system that doesn't allow alternates to talk and share opinions. That clearly was not the way the tag desired to operate at its initial meeting. So I think we're a little more open group than that, and we're trying to keep the group a bit informal and have open technical dialogue about issues that we think the staff wants us to address, and those things that would be of import to the board. So we'll go down that path. Secondly, Jeff mentioned about the groundwater flow model. It's a work in progress, as groundwater models always are. Do we need to know what you're going to do with respect to seawater intrusion as a policy decision today, to continue work on the model? No, we don't. But pretty soon, we're going to be asking you for scenarios. Pretty soon, we're going to be asking you for ideas on what kinds of management decisions do you think you're going to want that model to address? Are you going to push seawater intrusion back? Okay, let's make sure we've got the model properly constructed so it'll be able to help inform us about that kind of scenario. So it's not necessary to have a decision today, but it is necessary to begin to think about that very seriously, because your consultant that's going to assist you with the GSP is going to be asking you that. And those kinds of decisions inform how you get to your sustainable yield number. Thank you.
Can I ask him a question?
I'm Tony Oregon with United, sorry.
Tony?
Can I ask Tony a question while you have the microphone? Whether this is some long-term locked-in objective, if this is one of the potential objectives we would want, let's say we have three different objectives for, you know, you said, you know, what are the possible policy objectives that you may want to have from? If this, if the way this is worded for seawater intrusion, what if we say one objective is that what we want to do is stabilize seawater intrusion at its current level, right? And another might be to push it back, and another might be to allow no more in than whatever, right? But if we want this one to be one of them, at some point in time, we're going to have to say that, we want that to be one of them, for us to at least have that as an option. Is that accurate?
Are you saying with respect to the GSP development?
With respect to the model development and, yeah, and the GSP development.
Well, we're interested in knowing what the range of scenarios might be, so that we can make sure the model is constructed to deal with those scenarios down the road.
So if we want this to potentially be one of the range levels, we need to ask for this. Is that correct?
Yes. And the model, I can tell you right now, the model is being constructed to be able to address those three options: do nothing with respect to seawater intrusion, push it back, or sort of draw a line in the sand, if you want to think of it that way, to try to handle those three kinds of variables.
Thank you.
Steve?
You know, the worry about delay on this, and I certainly support it, is because of the consultant. I've been on both sides of both writing RFPs and responding to RFPs. And the very fact of what you're talking about, about the, what you're trying to cover in here, what are your, some of your primary purposes, that's what's important to the consultant as far as responding to the RFP, not the absolute numbers. I always thought that part of this process, actually, was going to be the consultant in an interactive way, talking about what's possible and what's not. And so those objectives actually may come out of some of the work on the GSP. But I think as far as responding to the GSP, I don't think you have to say, "This is exactly what you want at this point." They have to know what kinds of subject matter do they have to cover as they're going through this, and I think they've got that information already.
If I could respond, I mean, that's what this is. From the standpoint of trying to wear a hat of the general public member, of a general public representative here, I just, I scratch my head a little bit when we say, "Well, the consultant can come and tell us, hey, that objective's not obtainable. From what we've been able to find out, you can't get there from here," right? That's fine, then we have to. But from the general public standpoint, these seem like four very reasonable positions for us to say, "We hope our plan can stabilize, you know, seawater intrusion. We hope our plan can abate or do not allow groundwater quality to degrade beyond basin plan objectives without mitigation. We hope our plan can lead to no net subsidence due to," now, and I appreciate your thing about subsidence could be for all kinds of reasons, but it's qualified. It says, "No net subsidence due to groundwater withdrawal." Not no net subsidence at all, but where you could identify it that way. Public trough depressions, you know? I think, you know, we hope our plan can promote water level recovery to mitigate or to minimize undesirable results. Not get rid of every depression, but just a mitigator. So if we don't start with that, I don't even know how a consultant could tell us, "We can't do one of those things." But I would at least want to say, "We hope our plan can do this." Let's have the consultant and the modelers and everybody else know, "This is what we're hoping we can achieve, because these all sound like good things." There is, as has been pointed out over and over again, this body is very capable of constantly adjusting, and they, even staff said, "This doesn't lock these things in, but it is a starting spot." I have trouble thinking that we're going to say, "We want a starting spot that is not as clear or whatever, as strong as this." That we want a starting spot that's weaker than this, that we're concerned that this is too hard for us to even begin to get the data that we need to see if we can do this. That's how I just get from the public's perspective.
What I, Steve, what I would argue is that if you go through the, each of these proposed objectives, the objective as it's currently written was really built on an objective that was created in '07. What I would propose is, is that you take the objective and you insert whatever that objective language is out of the Act itself that deals with these three issues. You allow the TAC to do what they're going to do. Staff will be involved, and that's Staff will be involved in that process. There's no other way around that. So let's just take that one off the table. Out of that process, I believe that these professionals know that the end game is sustainability. No one's going to propose or allow someone else to get away with a proposal that doesn't give you sustainability. And out of that, they may actually come back and say, to hit this objective in this particular area, this is the modifier to that objective. In this area, this is the modifier to that objective. In all areas, this is the modifier to the objective. And I guess the pushback I'm hearing, and the pushback I'm actually endorsing is, rather than at this point in the exercise, having us say to John Q. Public, yeah, that sounds reasonable, do it. I say, I'm John Q. Public. I don't know what's reasonable. All I know is what the act says you have to do. I'm turning to the technical group to define that to a more specific number without handcuffing them from the get-go. The model can go forward. I know that Tony's building, Dr. Sun is building this model where, if the model is correct, you can plug in all kinds of scenarios. We'll be able to get there. If you go to a consultant and you say to the consultant, you've got to get us from A to B. We're going to give you a technical group. We're going to have somebody look at an allocation scheme. There may be a market element to it. No, by the way, we've got to build facilities. That's the box you've got to play in. And what you do then is you basically... I mean, if somebody would make... Says, I would agree to adopt these. I would agree to adopt objectives today. If the objective is stated as it's written in the act, turn the tag group loose with the direction from the... from staff and have the discussion, start narrowing it down. And then they look across the board, and if they come back to us and say, we think we can tighten this one up, because what is the long-term prize? The long-term prize is sustainability. And right now, I would think that at this stage of the game, you still have objectives. They comply with the state law. The discussion will be how to get there and tighten them up as necessary going forward. So, the only reason I would say you have to send it to... Bring it up at the next board meeting, which is... Or a next special meeting. And I'm prepared to call special meetings until people can't stand coming to special meetings. I have no problems doing that. And it may be that that's what our tasking will be. Bring back to us within, by the first of next month, a special meeting that adjusts these to comply with state law or what the ordinance says. So, I'm not trying to kill the deal. I know this is 11th hour, and I know this bothers a lot of people. But I believe we're going to get ourselves bogged down on these objectives. And I am concerned we won't hit our target.
Excuse me, Lynn. I'm not understanding, because I thought I heard you say a couple of things. If all we're going to do is take wording out of the act, the state act, and put it on here, then I don't see any reason to send it to the tag.
Well, this is the document that the tag has to work with then. And that's fine.
Well, I'm just saying, if all we're going to do is... I mean, the tag was supposed to be working to do what it thought was best. So if we're going to tell them, take wording straight out of here, cut and paste over to our objectives, then there's no point in sending it back to them because they're not acting as any kind of an independent group. They're just going to be cutting and pasting. So, if we're going to do that, that's one thing. We can come straight to another meeting of ourselves. But if we're going to have them use their best information, their best knowledge, to do something, maybe they didn't have time to do it, but on quite a few... At least two of the four, it's in bold here, and it says, "The proposed management objective differs from staff's prepared solution discussed at the April 2, 2015 board meeting and what was proposed at the July 30th tag meeting." So they had plenty of discussion.
The issue that I heard was, the term stabilizing... What the act says, as it was read, is... And I'm paraphrasing because I don't have the actually in front of me. But unintended or unsustainable consequences. Seawater intrusion will be... There'll be no unsustainable or unsubstantiated... unreasonable to seawater intrusion. That's different, significantly different than stabilize seawater intrusion front at its current position. That's a huge difference. That's what bothers me. That's what bothers me. This is a very definitive statement. And I'm not hearing from the technical group that this in fact is a good position to take. So if we've got the best and brightest in the room, and they're telling us that is not a reasonable, good position to take at this point in the process, then I have problems with...
Well, was this what the majority of the tag members voted to have to send to us? There was no vote?
Yeah. Can I clarify?
Oh, God. I opened up a...
How do you breathe?
I didn't mean to suggest in my earlier comments that this is some group out in the, you know, Ethernet or something, just working by themselves and not under you guys' guidance. It's your tag committee. That part's clear. What I think I'm struggling with is, you've had one tag meeting. Apparently, there was a good discussion. And I think as Director Craven just asked, did the tag committee have a second bite at the saddle and say, yes, that caught all our ideas, and it found itself into this document? I don't know that they've had that discussion. I'm never... I'll promise you, I'll never attend a tag meeting. But I think they've just had one meeting where they had... Again, where they had a good discussion. This is the document that came out of that. And I don't know that they've had a second to say, yeah, that really captures what we did, and we're putting our seal of approval. Move on.
Steve, did you have your hand up? Somebody else I saw.
Chair Mullard, if I could. One thing that it's important to point out is that these objectives, when they were developed, were intended to be the preliminary objectives to provide guidance as the plan was being developed. Staff was quite aware of what was included in Sigma under Section 107.21W. That's the definition of undesirable results. It has six different points in there that talk about significant and reasonable reduction of groundwater storage. Staff actually went one step farther, saying, we just spent a year-long process looking at several of these issues, and we thought it might be appropriate then to provide the fence posts to enable the plan to go forward with additional definition. However, with that said, should your board desire, you could adopt those six points under Section W as your objectives or the point for moving forward, which then would just say, for example, significant and not to allow significant and unreasonable seawater intrusion. And those other... The five other points. That could be the objectives that you simply adopt. We were merely using the efforts that we went through over the past almost 18 months, working with the stakeholders on this. That's where this item actually came from.
May I?
Yeah.
So, are you suggesting there's some language that you think you could insert that comes right from the... That could be adopted?
Yes.
Right. So there could be some... I mean, but basically, we could direct staff to just put the language in that comes right from the act, if you want to do that. I think that I'd want to look at it, see how it all worked, but I'm fine with that. The thing I want...
Little bit suggesting, wasn't it?
It is, right. But the thing that I... Because I don't think that... I don't think my position's going to prevail on this. But the one thing I would emphasize that is really important, I think, for me to communicate, is when we set up the tag, the technical advisory committee, and we talked about staff, we emphasized that staff has to come and bring to us their best professional recommendation. The advisory committee was advisory to staff, right? As they tried to come up and present the stuff to us. We will make a huge mistake if we sit there and we say, the technical advisory committee will start to write reports that will come to us. And if there's anything I would implore us to do, it's to not do that. We have to have our professional staff dealing with the processes and the recommendations that come to us. We want them to get their... This input. But please don't, in our actions here today, do something to now modify because there's these other requests, modify the procedures that we have, I think, very thoughtfully put into place in terms of how... What we think is the appropriate interaction between the technical advisory committee, our staff, and this body. Thank you.
I just have one disagreement with what you said, Steve. And I read them yesterday, and I read them the day before. But the paragraph on the purpose of the technical advisory committee was to advise us, not our staff, as came from the packet.
I... Jeez. It's scary to me, and I am the fault of it because I raised a bunch of issues here that we could get bogged down and not meet our ultimate objective and get where we want to be. I think we have to recognize that this is a learning curve for all of us. We're marching down a road that we haven't been down before in this way. Similar, but not this way. And what I heard today was that some of the objectives that were written were not... Are not technically usable and may create a bunch of unintended consequences. And I've also heard that it was a great discussion, a good discussion. And the ultimate requirement is it has to come before the board to see if we approve it. I think we've all are in agreement, we need objectives. I don't think that's a question. I think we're all in agreement that this is a process between staff and whatever committee or groups that we put together. The question I am raising is, at this stage of the game, I think we can substitute the... This language, which I view as being narrow, to a broader language and allow the technical people to have the room to think about things and not be boxed in at this stage of the game. And I think by doing that, we will ultimately get a better product. I believe we're going to get some disagreement between members of the tag. And we're going to get some more disagreements. And at that point in time, given the discussion we have, we're going to have to make a decision, what is reasonable and what is fair. And that's where we start laying down the direction we go in concrete. But to limit the scope of brainstorming and analysis at this stage of the game, I have problems with that. And I saw Terry put his hand up real quick, so...
Thank you for laying that out like that, Chair. Because that is the way I feel about it. I agree with you. We make a mistake by boxing in our experts right up front.
Terry?
So those are really good observations, and I think a good construct for what I'm about to say. And I'm going to... At the risk of repeating myself, I think the concern with the technical group was that we were given objectives, and that's a policy decision for one. It's not our decision. So, I don't think we wanted to call them objectives. We wanted them to be considerations for development of objectives. So I think if you take what's in the Groundwater Sustainability Act, and the board were to say, we want these to be considerations for development of those objectives, ultimately into objectives that the board would develop, that would make sense. Because then we can study these considerations in the technical committee and with a consultant. But right now, we're not ready to say you should adopt these as objectives because we don't know what the implications are of each one of these objectives. So, I think if you called them considerations for potential objectives, or maybe we just need to take the word objectives out and just put them in. We want you to consider these things, these items, as part of the study. I think that would take a lot of people's heartburn away because we've had a lot of discussion here today. They want... The group wants other items to be studied within the context of those objectives. Because the sustainability plan or the act's objectives are, as directly he read them out of the act, they're fairly vague. And these start to then define, where you were saying, to get to more concrete, more narrow objectives for the specific local situation. So I think if we take the word objective out of this and make it consideration for objectives, then we can study them.
I would... I would, just for sake of simplicity at this point in time, I would stay with the word objective. I would propose that we adopt the language that the state has actually outlined for these areas. And I would also submit that the final objective of the tag group is to give us that sustainability number that everybody wants. And we have a timeline that we're going to get to. And we need to get on with that process. And I'm going to hold you to that punchline. That's really where I'm going to really come down, is that punchline. I want that answer. Because that answer plays into everything else that we're doing. And I'm putting huge pressure on United. Tony knows that I'm putting huge pressure on United to get this model done because it's crucial so you can run the scenarios that you want. And anyway.
I want to go back to something I said a while ago. I ask if that's what the tag wanted or agreed to or voted on or whatever. I can't remember the word I used. But it says here on page three, "The proposed objectives identified at the top of each appendix reflects the consensus of the tag at its July 28, 2015 meeting." So that's where I got the idea, everybody had agreed on these, or at least most people. I am not a believer that you've got to keep talking till you get everybody to agree on everything. So is that... Somebody told me, no, that's not true. Is that what happened?
Director Craven has the chair and having presided over it. And I think Tony did a fair job of describing it, and Terry did as well. Had a healthy discussion. We were there for four and a half hours, not all on this particular item. We did talk about the issues. We talked about even terms like abate. You can talk endless, whether it should be halt, abate, or whatever. In the end, trying to facilitate the discussion, we did make modifications in each of them to accommodate the concerns. Some of them you heard here. And there was a consensus to move forward with a recommendation, as you see today.
By consensus, you mean nobody said no?
Correct.
Everybody said I could...
Everybody had their turn, and there was debate. And it allowed everybody to talk. But ultimately, said, with these changes, are we okay?
Can we live with it? So people said they could live with it.
Thank you.
Now, having... Oh, go ahead. I was going to say, having settled that one.
Well, let me ask, is that settled? There are members of this group in here right now. Let's...
I wouldn't say we said we agreed with these objectives.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you say you didn't object? Did you object?
We may have just been exhausted. It was 6:30.
It's like a board meeting. It was four and a half hours, then it wound down.
So I think we agreed with some of the language and wordsmithing. But as I said, you know, you state your opinion, and then you're kind of... You know, how many times do you state your opinion? So, I've given you it again today in terms of, those are worthy causes, ideas to consider. But I don't think... At least I wasn't ready to say, these should be adopted by the board as the objectives. They need to be looked at and evaluated. And that evaluation should then come back to this board to decide what the objective is and what are appropriate qualifications that go with it based on the technical analysis that's being done. That's basically what I'm saying, so... Was that we were given the document. There were comments made. And staff said, we'll take that under consideration. So...
Okay. So... Let me tell you what...
Okay. Hold on, guys. This is exactly what I'm trying to avoid, is that I don't... I mean, I... First of all, I think staff did what we asked them to do. They produced a starting point. And I think we have to be careful that, and myself included, that we immediately throw what staff did out. I get that. But I've heard, and I'm hearing now again, it was not as homogeneous as one would be led to believe. And I'm concerned at this stage of the game, at the first meeting, they've only met once, that I don't want to poison the water. And maybe that's inevitable with what we're doing right now. I don't know.
My concern is, we got a group of experts together. And with the qualifications that these people had to have in order to be named, to be on the tag, they were experts. So we have taken what was developed, and we're throwing it out, and we're going to put something else in. If we're going to put in direct wording from the act, that's one thing. I think we need to be careful in the future what we ask them. Because if we take their recommendation on the next item, and we throw it out based on what a few people... recommendation on the next item, and we throw it out based on what a few people say here, then I think we're not going to have any participation from our experts that we have named to the tag.
Could I make a motion? Because I, I have a feeling this is kind of devolving into inefficiency.
Go ahead.
I would move that we ask the tag to reassemble and discuss these, these various topics that relate to the objectives we've seen. And one meeting may not be enough, I don't know. But then, let's hear again. But let's not box in real tightly-defined objectives right at the get-go, before we even really have had much input from our experts. Let's allow them to do some more studies, some more work, and then, in collaboration with staff, come back to us with something folks feel a little bit more collaborative about.
Does your motion include just discussing this, or discussing other wording perhaps taken from the act?
To return to new construction objectives.
Yes.
Yes, so new construction objectives. I don't know, I'm sure they need to discuss.
A new, just, just to visit, just to visit the whole discussion, I thought I heard you say.
Yeah.
Not necessarily tell them they have to do something new, but not do anything.
No, but tell them they can, just completely change it.
Mr. Morgan identified, this seems to be kind of an open, loose forum that people are able to kind of vent ideas and, not vent, vent's not the right word, put forward, express, thank you. I think that's an important process, that we need to let them go through.
I, I, I would ask, if you're going to make a motion, I think, I think this board needs to make a definitive statement, that the objectives need to be in line with the act.
I'll add that to my motion.
And the objectives in line with the act. The responsibility of the tag and staff is to have discussions on the technical merits, knowing that they have to meet those objectives. They've got to deal with seawater. They've got to deal with water quality. They've got to deal with pumping depressions. They've got to deal with all the things the act talked about, to make a sustainability plan that we can live with. And out of that discussion, I would venture to say that you're going to see modifications of, and tightening up of those objectives. That, to me, would be the logical sequence.
I like that phrasing of, yes. Let's end up with some objectives at the end of this. We haven't had enough discussion.
Did you, were you going to make a?
No.
There's a motion on the floor.
I think you covered all of it. Yeah. Because I would like to see staff, at the end of that process, staff return with their recommendations, whether they're these, whether these with modified language that comes out of Sigma, or whether there's something entirely different. Just come back and let us know what their recommendations were.
I'd just like, I'd like to ask staff a question about the motion, because I think it'd be helpful for us. So could I have Jeff and Tully, if you could come up? And, and my question is this, as you're coming up, if we adopt, quote, "The language of the act as the objectives," as we sort of here refer to sometimes, is that specific enough for us to accomplish what you were originally identifying for us, you wanted to accomplish with the modelers, with the consultant, et cetera? Or is it, or is it going to have to be refined further after that?
It would have to be refined further, in my opinion. And I'd just remind your board that when you said you formed the tag, you were going to send them very narrowly-focused technical questions. This is where, the discussion I've heard, has been more of a policy discussion. I think a reason we presented this to your board this way, this is the starting policy, it informs the model, the model informs your board, more policy discussion and adjustment as necessary. We're just trying to meet schedule here. That's, that's the, that's the driver. There's been significant stakeholder input into these objectives over 12 or 15 months. To characterize this as one tag meeting, giving you input on these objectives, is not as accurate as I think it should be. There has been significant. We went through the, what I think we called the Mollhart-Bennett process on these, and they comport with the 2007 groundwater management plan, and they get more specific than those objectives inside the act. That's why they were presented the way they are.
So, while I don't support the motion, I would encourage the people that do support the motion to recognize that if we just use the language of the act, that at least our staff is saying that's not going to be sufficient for what we need to do.
I'm not proposing that we just use the language of the act. I'm proposing that we allow the tag, and, and I disagree. I don't think these have devolved into policy discussions. I think tag has expressed to us that they very much want us to have technical discussions and come to consensus, and that they haven't been able to do that yet. That's my motion, is to.
Restate, restate, restate your motion.
My motion would be, allow this process to continue, and at the end of this process, put forward some objectives that are in, that conform to the, to the points of the act, and that ultimately will guide our GMP process in the best way possible.
Okay. A second, anybody?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, Jessica, roll call.
Chair Mollhart?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
No.
Director West?
Yes.
Director Portchard?
Yes.
Okay. There is in the agenda some executive officer reports, a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. And we're going to adjourn to the, we're going to adjourn to the September 23, 2015 meeting, or the call of the chair. And I will, I will call another special board meeting, if necessary, to move this thing down, down the road, okay?
I want me here.
We do have an, an August meeting, do we not?
That's too bad.
No August meeting.
I'll be here for the, I'll be here for the next regularly-scheduled meeting, Lynn.
All right. I can't, can't see the cursor.
Yeah. I'm going to go check the.
Really?
I had to laugh when I woke up and hear this news. It's really, oh, my goodness. Interviewing, I figured it's going to be.
The central issue will be pouring over in such weather, all the, the pluggings will be all the way to the sand more.
That's right, and all the sediment, until a hole will be washed out.
Yes, it's going to go right over the top.
It's going to go right over the top.
Or if we drill a hole in it, it'll go back to it.
So, El Nino's going to clean us out, fill us up.
All the bums in the river are going to be gone, too, because they could get hundreds of river of bridge like they did before.
In fact, I wonder if that was the.
We have video of that.
Iconic picture that of the.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I, I actually do remember that. I can find out. I know just who to ask. Yeah. Well, it's interesting discussions.
He needs to go back.
I need to re-express the saying.
I guess it could not hold the same.
The sack could decide.
We'll see. I mean, the RFP is out right now for consultants to bid on the GSP, so.
You've already written the RFP.
Oh, it's out.
Yeah, it's already written.
Why are we even discussing this? Well, to try and put up some fence posts, you know?
Well, I mean, if your RFP says we're going to have a plan to study whether it's orange or compared to red, and now we're going to decide what color we pick.
No, it's not like that. You know, it's, it's, there's a tight schedule, and it's not an excuse, it's just how it is. So we were hoping to put up some more fence posts for GSP. Not yet. All right. See you later.
Jessica, I can't figure out how to, I can't see the cursor on the screen.
I see that she got my clipboard for me, too. Thank you for grabbing that as well.